We will be adding an agenda item 22-066, which you should have a copy of to the left of your person. That is, we'll talk about it when we get there. But it's an MOU between us and Trust for Public Land that gives them access to the Riverland Park and the Campbellton Park to do the work of adding the pavilion and bathroom thing. And just kind of memorializes that. Anybody have any issues with the minutes that they want to address now?
Yep.
We will have a proclamation on our, what was GACP again? Is that the police thing?
That's the accreditation.
Yeah.
They'll have a representative next week. Janet Moon will be here from the GACP to present that.
Does she pin Jim with it?
Needs to.
Good, alright. Sorry.
When I read Robbie in your weekly report thing about the Green Light.
Yes ma'am.
For Bethns thing, they also have a resolution that we could add. Is that something you think about that?
We could.
We really don't need much for Bethns thing.
You'd have to just change the agenda to add it next week.
Yeah, that's fine.
We do that because they have sort of a couple of.
Can you forward that to me? I probably passed right by it and didn't pick it up.
I got it in.
Proclamation or what?
I don't know.
It's probably a proclamation.
Let me write that down.
And then we have a proclamation for Thanh, who is retiring. And then our normal reports. And then we go on to 22-051, which is the 70 acres annexing in on the west side of Atlanta Noonan and into Saranby. Michael.
Great.
And the microphone.
Sure.
So you've seen the plan, you've had the first read. Some of you were at the planning commission meeting. This is 69.48 acres on the west side of Atlanta Noonan Road. The bulk of it, right there along Atlanta Noonan Road on both sides of Selborn Way, which is kind of a back way into Saranby, but I wouldn't recommend trying to drive it without full of drive. And then it connects with a narrow strip across the top of Phase One and then another chunk on the west side where Wildflower Meadow is that little strip of Selborn Way that connects to the inn at Saranby. It's a chunk of land that we've just sort of been waiting for that to be added. It seems like a natural part of the hamlet. What they're proposing for the site is one new road called Garnet Ridge Road and 15 new lots total, two of them not actually on the newly rezoned area but served by that new road. You see them to the left of that eastern take chunk. And then 11 of the lots right on, sorry, 9 of the lots right on Garnet Ridge. And then four lots on an extension of Augusta Lane that would extend from the existing hamlet, the existing stretch of Augusta Lane, onto the newly rezoned property. So maybe that's approved. You'll also notice that sort of grayed in there, there is a traffic circle on Atlanta Noonan Road. That's not actually a part of this application. That's just sort of a planning thought that the property owner, the applicant has. This application doesn't include any intent to do that, except for they may reroute Selborn Lane along the part of that that they own, one part of that that they own, and move the entrance to, I'm sorry, Selborn Way, just to align with that, thinking that it might happen in the future. But if anything like that were to happen with Atlanta Noonan Road, it would take a whole bunch more process by city council. So that's not something they can do on their own and they're not actually proposing to do that at this point. But the new lots, the new rezoning are proposed. Staff recommendation is for approval, planning commission's recommendation is for approval. There are some recommended conditions, including a regular sort of boilerplate conditions, which I'm happy to run through if you would like. And then one more.
What are the non-boilerplate conditions?
I'm sorry?
That's what he was about to say.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the conditions are right behind the memo. They include things like number.
He said, what are the non-boilerplate ones?
The non-boilerplate one, the very last one, number seven. It was recommended in the planning commission meeting by, or actually just before, by email, by John Reed, the owner of Deer Hollow, which is actually also a part of the hamlet. And he has an agreement, it's actually a contract with the applicant, but would like it to be also a condition in the zoning that there is a 100-foot perpetual non-buildable buffer along the southern border, which is the border with the Deer Hollow property. So asking just for us to include it. So it's also a city issue, not just a contract issue, that that 100-foot border remain in place.
And that's also on the map of the application.
That's correct.
So it's obvious that that was the intent.
That's correct.
Just, again, perspective, we talked about this last time. This was always a part of the plan and it's just now finally coming into the zoning because they need the TDRs. Couple changes in the lots and the locations, but it's basically pretty close to what was always in the plan. Any questions about that for Mike? An applicant's here too, if we have any questions for them? Alright, next one is 22-052, which is the special use permit for a country inn and event center up on, well, kind of in between Cochrane Mill and Cascade Palmetto. Mike?
That's right. Over 100 acres between, at the north end, north end of the city, with entrances on both, existing entrances on both Cochrane Mill Road and Cascade Palmetto Road, the state highway there. The land has been partially cleared, there have been orchards planted, there is a residence there in kind of upstairs in a barn that the applicant built for him and his family to stay in. And the proposal is for both a country inn and a special event center. I'll point out again, with the country inn, you can host events. It's going to take, it would take him a while to get the country inn up and running. He wants to be able to host events sooner than that would happen. So that's why he's applying separately for an event center. The proposal is for a limit of 250 guests at the event center. The event space is at that barn and the land immediately surrounding it. The country inn would take the shape, take shape around the lake toward the south. There's a four-acre lake in the southwestern part of the property. It would start as 10 cabins, actually maybe not even 10, just start with six and then another four, I think, is the way planning on phasing it. And then at a later date, as you can see on the plan, there's a spot for a 40-room inn building. Of course, we don't know if it'd be 40-room, but that's what would be allowed under the country inn. So he's talking about it like it's 40-room, it would be a 40-room country inn. With the original application, there was proposal for the main entrance to be on Cascade Palmetto Highway. As this started making its way through the process and we started talking about what happens, assuming approval, what would happen after approval, we started talking about the requirement for GDOT approval of that Cascade Palmetto Highway entrance. And we started talking about what sorts of, with the high speeds there and the truck traffic, what kind of improvements might be required by GDOT. And the applicant has asked to change the proposal for the entrances from the main entrance on Cascade Palmetto to having the Cascade Palmetto Highway entrance be trucks and employees, deliveries, and then the main entrance for guests to be on Cochrane Mill Road. So that's a requested change. In the planning commission hearing, the planning commission recommended approval. I wasn't intending to skip ahead to that, but one of their conditions that they had proposed was that if there were any change to the location of the entrance from the state highway there, that that would be a concept plan change and require city council approval. So he would have, if you adopted it, if you approved it with that condition, assuming Cascade Palmetto Highway as the main entrance, and that became a problem, he would have to come back to you for approval of the other entrance. He has, in the meantime, requested that approval of you for, to use that other entrance, the Cochrane Mill entrance. So that's what we're being asked to consider. The planning commission recommended five to nothing unanimously for approval. And there are a handful of recommended conditions. The site plan serves as a conceptual plan. Any departure from the general concept will require council approval. And then the sentence that they had, the planning commission had asked to add to that was a sentence about if the entrance moves, in the version that I presented to you, I changed it a little bit because the request is a little different, and I changed it to moving the delivery/truck/employee entrance would be a concept plan change requiring city council approval, meaning if you were to approve the entrance scheme that he's asking for, and he doesn't want to use that state highway entrance for those things and wants to move that on the Cochrane Mill Road, driving truck traffic on Cochrane Mill Road, then that would require additional approval of city council. They would have, you would have to come in for a concept plan change. The other three conditions. Permitted capacity of the event center will be limited to 250 guests. Any event exceeding this limit will require a special event permit from the city. We've talked about that with special event centers, applying a number for, based on the infrastructure, based on the application. But just like any other property owner, if they wanted to do something big, they could come to the city for a special event permit, same as anybody else in the city. The owner will reserve for the city of Chattahoochee Hills along the frontage of Cochrane Mill Road, 45 feet from the settle line of Cochrane Mill Road. That's basically just a reservation in case some road improvement does have to happen there. It just means that property will be available for the city if something happens, some sort of extra lane, turn lanes, or something needed to be. It just widens the right, effectively widens the right-of-way. We're not asking for the dedication at this point. It's just a reservation in case that additional right-of-way is needed. And then finally, any turn lanes, acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, or medians that may be required at the entrance to the proposed development shall be the responsibility of the applicant/developer. Any such improvements in the city of Chattahoochee, in the city of Chattahoochee Hills will be conducted only with the approval of Chattahoochee Hills Department of Public Works and according to the standards of Chattahoochee Hills. Just means we have control of how that work is done. It's their responsibility to get it done, but we have control of how it's done. So those are the recommended conditions for.
Mike, you have a question? So we went to tour the property. The property owner showed me that he also purchased, I couldn't tell by entrance, but it seems like a property next door, Chuck Miller's property.
That's right.
And I can't tell by his nice drawing rather than the line drawing if that's part of this plan.
It's not included in the application.
Gotcha, okay, okay. I think I share the planning commission's concern about the entrance on Cascade Palmetto and the property owner's concern, he would rather have it there too, but that at some point when he has more traffic and more revenue, he could potentially build it. I just, I hope, in your discussion with him, you made it clear that if he changes that entrance on the Cascade Palmetto Road in any way, he's got to go through GDOT. I know that's not our responsibility, but just don't want him to be caught off-guard by just allowing that. Okay.
Reminded, as I was hurrying back from Franklin for the meeting today, driving on 16 and a variety of GDOT roads, they've required turnout lanes for every development thing, every commercial thing all along there, but none of the crossroads have them. That's where all the traffic is actually.
I know the thing, coming in the city hard.
Right? Like, you know, you're tearing along 60 miles an hour and somebody stops in front of you to turn left into another GDOT road.
Right.
With no turn lane.
That's interesting, yeah.
It's just ironic.
We explored what the GDOT requirements are, got the documents, and found out what the thresholds are on that road, depending, I don't know if you're interested in.
Well, I mean, you know, to Lori's point, I think it is better for everybody if it's off of Cascade Palmetto. I understand too, you know, the cost of that. I think in the context of the 50-room inn, it's probably not that huge a cost.
Right.
But there's also a phasing issue. You're not building the 50-room inn first day, so.
That's right.
You know, I don't, I'm not sure how to capture that.
Right, right. So at this point, right, he said, he doesn't know, he doesn't know idea how much business he's going to get, right? It's hard to invest all that extra money not knowing how much business.
For sure.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alright, next up is 053, which is variants on a buffer. Mike, again.
So this is, this is the Art Farm. Everybody knows, I think, the Art Farm on Atlanta Noonan Road, which is just a, actually a very small piece of what's proposed here. So the part you see is sort of the public face, but there are a couple narrow strips that connect that to a lot more land in the back. You can see on the site plan how that works. There's sort of the front area, which is the one we all know of, and there's nothing in particular proposed there in the concept plan of the variants. There's a middle section, which is oddly shaped, kind of this trapezoid, almost a triangle, and then a bigger chunk in the back. The proposal is to reduce the, oh, well, let's say, this was rezoned in, I want to say 2018. It was rezoned a while ago, and when it was rezoned, there was no concept plan presented or approved at the time, so it's a blank slate right now. Now they're coming with that concept plan, here's what we want to do. And by the way, to do it, we need these variances. In the, so there's this oddly shaped central section and a big part in the back. Part of the hamlet property extends farther south of that back section. So you can see, if you're looking at the site plan, the dotted lines for, dotted black lines and dotted red lines for the code buffers and the proposed buffers sort of extend down, they just go straight down. There's no buffer along the south side because that's actually part of the hamlet. No buffer would be required there anyway, so it's hamlet below to the south. What they are proposing is a variety of uses, artist center, makerspace, and some artist dwellings, kind of cabins in the middle section, the oddly shaped portion, and then some more residential or lodging, I think it's lodging space in the back part, some additional off-grid cabins and an amphitheater, and then some parking. That back section is very constrained. I added, the last page, sorry, second to last page in your packet is a markup I did of their site plan showing the constraints. And it's even, it's even a little too generous because all I did was highlight where the, what's developable within the buffers, 150-foot buffers, and then excluded stream buffers. The part in the far east, the part on the far right side, the biggest chunk there, is actually not really all that developable either because there are some steep slopes that would be problematic there. I just wasn't competent to identify where they started and stopped, and so all that's green, but it's not really all developable. So you can see there's severe constraints on the property, difficult to use. What they have proposed is buffers that are equivalent to the rural setbacks. So 60 feet in the front, 25 feet on the sides, 50 feet in the back. And when it went to planning commission, there was quite a little bit of discussion. And the recommendation that came out of that, which was partially in discussion with the applicant who was here, and I think, I think the applicant was okay with what they recommended, was that the buffers in the middle section, the oddly shaped section in the middle, the 100 feet on the left side there, the eastern side where there's a property owned by the Johnsons, so that would be 100-foot buffer, which is basically up to where the building, that first building is roughly 100, shown, 150, I'm sorry, 100 feet from the property line. So that would be right at the building there. And then to the north and the south, 50 feet, so twice what was requested, with an additional line that any additional space that's available be given in favor of the property owner to the south. That's a residential property. The property to the north is undeveloped, unoccupied. Property to the south has a house, there are two lots actually there. And then the farthest, the biggest chunk in the east is this, that they would honor the 150, develop according to the 150-foot buffers that are in the code. So they would just end up pulling everything in and stay within those 150-foot buffers. I actually created something just today, at the very end of the day, that I'm happy to hand out that shows my interpretation, and it's rough, I didn't measure precisely, but the red lines are what the planning commission recommended.
Oh, this is so helpful.
Yeah. Like I said, adjusted.
It's too tall in to hear. These buildings would end up down here.
So that's what I see at the planning commission recommendation.
Yeah, you know, like the conversations that we're having yesterday, the strong likelihood is that property to the north, that 102-acre property, will either at some point be zoned hamlet or a very least residential hamlet. And so the worry about buffering in that direction, to me, is not that high. And we've also talked in the comp plan, even talked about the idea of taking these lots that are surrounded by hamlet and zoning them hamlet as well at some point. We haven't had capacity to figure out how to work out the buffering within the spaces and all of that. But, you know, that's part of why someone might buy that property. I think it's part of why someone did buy that property in anticipation of that possibility because it creates value. So, I mean, the buffering is not as important here in my mind as it would be for whatever that's worth.
So what were the concerns, what were the concerns the planning commission had?
Well, I think part of it is just.
If you don't see the variance, don't take it.
Right, right. It's just that hamlets are supposed to be buffered, right? Any development that's not allowed in the rural district is supposed to be buffered from the rural district. They didn't express specific concerns about a particular kind of issue, although it does refer in the memo, and Doug in particular, one of the planning commission members, pulled up the language for the intent of the buffers, which is written specifically for visual impact. And there is a recommended condition here, the first one of the three recommended conditions, is if any location of the buffer has sufficient, insufficient vegetation to provide satisfactory screening of the development on the property, the owner of the property shall plant additional native evergreen plants to create an effective buffer. So there is a proposed condition that's intended to help out with that.
And another question, Mike. On the drawing you just handed out, the heavy red line, would that be the buildable area?
That would be, that would be the edge, again, I'm not precise, sorry, I just, I was eyeballing it.
Like the, the period.
What I was, what I was thinking of is, is the road to get back there, is that inside the heavy red line or how does that work?
Yeah, right. So the, there is some clearing that's allowed in a buffer if it remains an effective visual buffer. Not supposed to be pavement in the buffer, except, unless you're going through it, right? We know, we know you're going to have to have entrance roads going through it, but, so if they had some unpaved uses back there, that could be okay in the buffer as long as the buffer still remained effective. There is actually written, a normal part of the buffers are a 10-foot setback interior to the buffer, building setback. So that would be expected to be, to be a part of that. So where it shows 50, it would really be 60 before you get to a building, 100 would really be.
So.
Gravel parking lots can live in a buffer though.
If.
As long as the buffer.
It could potentially, yes, yes, as long as the screening requires screenings.
So the Rock Hill Drive, which I think the applicant said that they would like to offer to improve at their own cost, not take over, but just to, but that would sort of be extended and would that be the main road to get back there and also later to the amphitheater?
Yeah, I think, so they're showing two roads going back there. They have property, long strips of property both to the north and to the south, and they're showing, showing roads on both of them. I think the, well, we'll let, we'll let the applicant answer as far as the second road. I see the Rock Hill Road being probably the main way in for most of the uses. The other road is, I think, a service entrance for the amphitheater, but it does connect to the parking lot, so I don't know if it would be also a guest or maybe exit or something.
It's this thing right here.
Really thinking that it's a loop from fire safety.
Okay.
And the fire department would want that, so that's a good.
So that like a fire.
Secondary access.
Let's come in and second access around.
It's also safer when you're loading in a show or something, that entrance one way, exit the other.
Gotcha.
And there is a recommended condition about Rock Hill Road, just that any improvements required to a Rock Hill Road would be the responsibility of the applicant. Fairly standard condition for these things too.
So no question? Yeah, sorry. In a concept plan, are we approving what's on the paper? Or, for example, now, if we go with what's in the heavy red line, they'd obviously have to shift some things around, and I think the applicant said that they probably intend to do that. But how does that work as far as what we see and what we approve?
Right, so it depends on, partially on what you feel comfortable with. I could see it working, conceptually, what you'd be saying is roughly these kinds of uses in these kinds of places, but where we're showing, where we're saying that they have to be tighter, and again, there's a condition here that explains those dimensions that we talked about. And the recommendation for the concept plan, which comes later, is that these conditions also be included as concept plan conditions. So if you add that condition to the comp plan, the understanding would be, okay, we're okay with these uses, but you, we know you're going to have to move them within the lot, within those bounds. So we would expect them to be in generally the same area, but moved within bounds.
So on the right side of your piece of paper, the two large buildings on the amphitheater side, that would probably have to come into the heavy red line?
Yeah, you would move those out.
Yeah.
And your applicant's okay with that? Your thumbs up?
Yeah, this is nothing but planned.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No. I mean, I was just trying to get a handle on the, so the 25-foot setback behind American Business Group.
Right.
So is that, you're saying if it goes to 50, but with, that's just giving ample room to plant the buffer? I didn't really, and so if you can drive through it, if you can put a gravel drive through that area?
No, you'd be shifting the road up, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Within this drawing?
I was just thinking about going from 25 to 50, like what do, what?
That road that runs linearly along the buffer would have to be moved not within the, outside of that 50 feet. You can go through a buffer sideways, right? But, or dip in maybe, maybe, right? But you can't just pave a road along the buffer and, you know, clear the buffer for the road.
If that road's 16 feet wide, that red line's about a third of the way into it, so you'd be shifting the road about 10 feet up in this drawing.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, little incidental, incidental encroachments in the buffer might be okay, right? But you can't just.
To the planning commission's point, you know, if the applicant is willing, the more buffer you have, the closer it is to the plan, the better, right? So.
And planning commission's vote was three to two in favor. With those three conditions, the one on vegetation, adding vegetation where necessary, the Rock Hill Road improvements, and then the language just describing basically where the red lines went on here. So the 100 feet on the west side, 50 on the north and south in the center, and then pulling everything on the eastern portion within the regular 150-foot buffers.
Alright, any other questions? No? Next up is 054, which is a setback change on Glacial Lane.
So this is the Heatherwood subdivision, lot number one, which is the lot that also includes the Heatherwood sign. It's the first lot on the right side as you're facing it from the road. Fulton County imposed a 100-foot scenic byway setback on the development. Of course, in our, we don't do that because you can't build something like Heatherwood except as maybe a hamlet, right, which would require a buffer, so we don't have the same sort of setback. But you can see on the, on the plan shown by the, provided by the applicant, how that setback really cuts into the lot and does not leave much of a buildable area. And they actually had applied for and received a building permit on that lot and have poured the slab. And what actually happened was the foundation that you see in that drawing is a mirror image of the foundation they were supposed to pour. So it would have barely fit had it been poured in the correct orientation. But they self-reported it, applied for the variance. It wasn't something they got caught on, it was a mistake that they came and told us about. And they showed also in their application on the, on the next page, how well actually things really do line up along the street, right? The only reason that that misorientation of the building matters is because the lane, Glacial Lane sort of curves at the end, and that means the setback curves. And so all the buildings still line up in a nice neat line. It's not like this one is sticking out. It lines up really with the other buildings. So the impact is pretty limited. So, anyway, recommendations for approval and planning commission recommendations for approval also.
Any questions, anybody? Nope, alright. Next one is 055, which is the setback variance.
It stays at Cedar Grove Phase One. This is a request for the same thing that was granted to the Heatherwood subdivision when it, when it got started. They wanted to be able to have side entry garages on the homes, which the city is also in favor of. And in order to do that, are asking for a reduction of the side setbacks from 25 feet to 15 feet, gives them an extra, 20 feet of width, they can push the building over one side, actually it really only gives them, it gives them 10, they're going to push the building to one side, they can do the side, the driveway can go in the setbacks anyway. But let's push the buildings over to the side if they, if they need to for a, for a side entry garage. I feel like the need for this is a little less in this neighborhood than it would. I feel like the need for this is a little less in this neighborhood than it was in Heatherwood. Heatherwood had more narrower lots. However, city staff and planning commission very much in favor of those side entry garages. And we note also that, again, if this were a subdivision that was designed under our rules, it would have had to have been a hamlet, and the hamlet would have had smaller setbacks anyway. So what we have is a mismatch between these smaller, more hamlet-y lots, they're bigger maybe than some more hamlet lots, but, and then our bigger rural district setbacks, which are, you know, what you would have on a three-acre lot or a 20-acre lot or something like that. So a little bit of a mismatch there. And had this, but again, had this been hamlet, all the setbacks would have been quite a bit smaller, and honestly, staff would have been in favor of approval of hamlet-style setbacks for the front as well as the rear as well as the side. Again, recommendation for approval and unanimous recommendation from planning commission as well. There are a couple of conditions related to... Two conditions. First one, all houses built on the 34 lots in Phase 1, that's what we're talking about here, that have garages shall have side entry garages. The original staff recommendation was for those that are going to use an air setback, they would have to have side entry garages. Planning commission thought it would be better, so we just said, hey, just put side garages on all of them. And so we did that. The language that came out of planning commission also didn't have the little caveat, those that have garages, but I didn't think it was their intent to require garages necessarily, although maybe it's a misread. So I just said, those that have garages will have side entry garages, you could choose to adopt it anyway. And then the other is, like we did in Phase 2, we added the requirement for a tree in the front yard of each to go along with the variance. So minimum four-inch caliper, native or fruit tree, hardwood or fruit tree.
Mike, was the applicant okay with all of the houses in Phase 1 with side garage?
It's a requirement for something for any development anyway. Any other questions on that one? Next one up is the one where the little house wants to go in front of the big house, which is 056.
Right, this is at 10-100 or 10100. People update every day, I wonder how they say it. A variance to allow an accessory dwelling in front of, in the first layer, which means in front, closer to the road than the main house. It's a little over five acres on Rivertown Road, just north of Henry Mill Road, on the west side of the road. And in fact, it's the lots that face Henry Mill Road, their backyard meets the side yard of this property. The property does have some significant elevation changes from Rivertown Road, it goes down about 15 feet and then up another, I wanna say 40, I'd need to look at the numbers anyway. It goes down and then up fairly steeply to the house and then back down again in the back. The home, proposed home is for one of the aging parents of one of the couple, and this parent is already not willing to go down that driveway as is, so they'd like to build this accessory dwelling up in the front. It's heavily wooded with heavy vegetation in the front, you really can't see onto the property very well at all from the road. And the home that's proposed is fairly attractive, I think if people were to see it from the road, it probably wouldn't bother anybody. They still have to live within the regular setbacks, right, so it'd need to be at least 60 feet from the road. We have a proposed condition that evergreen vegetation is permanently maintained to hide it anyway. That's the kind of detail that will be lost over the years with new owners moving in probably, but that's one of the recommended conditions. And the other is that the proposed accessory dwelling would be substantially similar in style and materials to the image provided. I understand from the applicant who's there, they're not planning on painting it white, like the pictures, I think they were talking about black, actually. So if that's important to anybody, take it into consideration. But staff and planning commission, again, recommended approval.
And the key here is that if they were just building this house by itself on the lot, they could build this exact thing in the exact place without any restrictions, other than the setbacks, one. And two, you can't see the other house from the road anyway, so it will feel from the road like something that could have been absolutely built just like this anyway.
Mike, so I'm fine with this, I just kinda have a technical question going forward. So I understand it's like the mother-in-law kinda house, the, so if the family decides to sell the entire property at some point in the future, it can't be separated into two lots, right? Because it would be, wouldn't meet the minimum acreage, right?
That's right, that's right.
Anybody else? All right, next up is the concept plan for Garnet Ridge, which is the one we talked about earlier.
All right, yep, this is the rezoning. You've seen the plan, the staff and planning commission both recommend approval with the conditions recommended for the rezoning, who attach those same conditions to the concept plan.
Nope, all right, and the next one is the concept plan for the art farm?
Similar story here. If you're going to approve the variance, the recommendation is also to approve the concept plan. In this case, we have the conditions that were recommended for the variance and then two additional conditions, planning commission added for the, to propose for the concept plan. One is that, as is proposed by the applicant, no fee simple residential lots allowed, meaning they can't turn those into residences, it would be sold. And then the other is that the parking area is located just to the north of the border with the parcel labeled N/F, which means now or former American Business Group, that those parking areas would be moved farther from the property or screened. By the way, just reduce the impact of those parking areas on that neighborhood. So with those two conditions, and then the conditions in the variance itself, recommendation for approval.
And again, you know, that means that the drawing will be a little different, the final drawing than what we're seeing, but we know how it's gonna be different because of the description, so Mike will just do that administratively when that happens. All right, next is 063, which is the pumper truck.
I'm gonna come up to the mic because this is being recorded virtually, so hopefully you're not gonna sell these wires here in about a month from now, so it's working and stuff. The next item before you is the lease for the fire truck that you just purchased. And as promised, it was asked if, you know, we're gonna go forward with this lease, and we went ahead and purchased it, we have to have lease done by November 6th with GMA. And so we're gonna do that, we've already done all the paperwork, and the lease is, you know, it's a $325,000 truck, but there's a lot of upfitting, Greg can speak to all the upfitting, so the ultimate overall price is gonna be 361, 335 is what we're gonna finance, and that's gonna be over a period of five years at 3.64% interest. And the first payment won't come until, it's not supposed to come until next fiscal year. So it'll come after July of next year, that's the plan, that's what we have in place. And I'd say what we got, we have one more payment on all that public works equipment you remember we bought for $494,000 several years ago, and that comes next fiscal year or two, but that's the last payment on that, which is exciting, because that means all that equipment's paid off. But I don't wanna take away, do you think, if the fire chief has anything to add, because this is his agenda, I just took it because of any kind of budgetary questions you may have.
I would just say, I think it's a huge advantage, it's genius to say, hey, look, let's get it now, we need it now, and we can defer the payment, and we're, you know, we're able to get a new vehicle for a very affordable amount, and the upfitting is roughly another $32,000. And that's all rolled into it, and there's every expectation that all that equipment would remain for the life of the vehicle. It's all durable types of stuff.
And from a budgetary perspective, from a cash flow perspective, the payments only overlap one fiscal year, and basically, you know, what we've been paying for the one thing goes down after that, so.
And I may have lost track, but are we selling and getting rid of an existing vehicle? So we have plenty of room for...
Well, we are going to have one, the unit that was purchased from Newton approximately six years ago, seven years ago, that we will have in dry dock, if you will. The current first-out engine becomes our reserve engine, more reliable engine, and the older unit from Newton becomes sort of that dry dock unit, just wait and see how our future evolves, the department services evolve, and if we can use that again as another reserve unit.
So we now place this store there?
We do, yeah. And the other thing is, we're always considering this idea that, you know, we might be adding that station.
Exactly, if we could throw another reserve into there, then that's great.
Great, thank you. Next up is the CVB resolution. Just a reminder of how that works and the kind of unfortunate situation that we're in and how we're gonna resolve it. So the way that this ordinance was written is different from all of the other ones with respect to how convention or Bureau of Tech, commission members are chosen, in that each council person selects one, mayor selects one, and then there are three more that we can select as a group, right? There are also some requirements around them, you have to have, for example, somebody who runs a hotel in the city, if you have a hotel in the city, that sort of thing. We had a bunch of people offer interest, and we popped through those, some of those people withdrawn their interest. But, you know, we popped through that a couple months ago, and we're getting close to getting that resolved a couple months ago. I got nominations directly from three of the council people, and two of them I just never was able to get an actual commitment out of. So what we're going to do, because the commission has to have at least seven members to be activated, and we can, by vote of the council, activate those seven, and we will have two that are not yet there, that are just open positions, that whenever we can get a nomination from those two council people, they can be seated. So the ones that we have so far that are committed are Steve Nygren, that was from Camille, Lori was Carla Lucas Edwards, Joyce Woods was from Ruby, Mike Greto, who we've talked about, he's been on both the New Orleans and the Palm Beach or Palm Woods CVB, so actually has CVB experience. And then for the three, the three remaining...
Oh, was my, excuse me, was your nomination?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The three remaining, Julianne West, who's the manager of the Serenby Inn, should be one of them, just because that's a position that we have to put in. And then we've talked about several other folks, and I'm just gonna kind of run through the list of the people that were interested, that nobody had strong objections to, that, you know, were still on the list, kind of, that hadn't withdrawn. Clarice Strong is one, she had been for a long time the vice president of operations at MGM Grand in Las Vegas, she lives in Chathills now, has a lot of experience in hotels and whatnot, and like hotel development. Carter Williamson, who we know from Cherry Hollow, Brooke Lacour, who we know from Chathills Eventing and the Bukart property, the event stuff up there. Janice Barton, who is the chair of the art farm. And then April Avera, who works in corporate with Cracker Barrel and has been involved in a lot of their, like, corporate relationships, like when they work with a football team, for example, provide food for whatever, so that's her, that's her business background. All of those people have expressed interest, they've all sent stuff to us that I've sent to you guys, we circulated all that, sorry it's been a while, but, you know, that's all there, and...
Are we limited to nine?
We're seven to nine, yes. I think that's right.
It is, yeah.
No more than nine. So, you know, we need to come up with three, and we don't have to make that decision today here right this second, but we can, or you guys can just, you know...
I like to just move this along as we can, you know, it's been a couple months, if you guys...
I want to put this on the Tuesday agenda, though, and vote and get the thing seated so that we can get going. We had talked about having the group together before we made the final call on what we're gonna be doing about a staff support for that, right? And we're still looking for a replacement for Nathan anyway, originally Nathan was gonna be that staff support because he had that background, depending on who we hire, we may or may not get that. So anyway, that, yeah, it's time to get this done.
Does, yeah, I'd really like to see someone from Bukart's farm, does Brooke have this type of experience that would contribute to this team?
I don't think she has direct experience in CVB work. I mean, obviously she's been involved a lot in their operations up there, right? Carter doesn't have direct CVB kind of experience either, but he's obviously been involved in their operations. I don't think anybody on this list has actual CVB experience, other than some of the people that we've already, you know, Steve was obviously Midtown Alliance for a long time, so he's had a role that is exactly that.
So my personal hope was, you know, that Bukart Village is in Richie's district, that that might be one of his candidates, and Carter is in Troy's district, that would be one of his candidates, we don't know without talking to him. But I agree, the other Serenby candidates, we gotta have someone from the inn and the art center, the art farm that makes sense, I don't know.
And that would be the seven?
It would be, if we, well, we could talk about...
We're at four right now, so we're talking about three more that are not coming from the other two council people, and then two from the council people.
So if we did...
Now, I'm happy to, you know, if they show up for the meeting on Tuesday, I'm happy to put a slate in that has all nine people on it.
Let's do it, and see if they'll vote on it, you know, they can change their mind, but it might be easier for them to see some...
Is that why there is someone from their district, you know?
I think we don't really have it. Of course, we need some names.
I like Julie West from the art, oh, say that again, I was, that's from the Serenby Inn, right, the Inn.
Yeah, Julianne West is from the Inn, and she's awesome, and she's sharp, she's worked for Weston Corporate before, right? Yeah.
And Janice from the art farm, they do so many events, that sort of makes a sense.
Janice is absolutely amazing.
And then I'm not sure that I'm familiar with the other people that you mentioned, Tom, are you guys familiar with any of those other ones, or do we need one more?
You know what, I didn't have phone numbers for everybody, too, I mean, I'm happy to give you phone numbers for anybody that we don't have.
For sure, Steve Nygren and Carla and Joyce, and then Mike, those are our nominations. Then we go with Julie West from the Serenby Inn and Janice from the art farm, five, six, seven, that, five, six, we need one more. And what we're thinking, Carter, well, I had Carter and Brooke.
Carter and Brooke come through the other one.
Hoping that they'll be Richie and Troy, so we just need one more, so.
Clarice is a super-strong businesswoman and smart.
I don't know, I don't know her, I mean, I don't know, but yeah.
I mean, I'd be happy to give everybody her phone number, you know, whatever you want.
Let's hand that to the list and get the phone numbers in, what do you think about that, give them a call?
So that's what I'll put on the thing for Tuesday. If anybody changes their mind about anything, let me know, but that's a good provisional list.
It's a good one, very good.
All right, and then we have the 23 meeting schedule.
Cool.
That's item 65. And as always, there are a couple of, you know, variations from schedule because of Thanksgiving or Fourth of July or whatever. Actually, Fourth of July doesn't cause a problem this time, it's Labor Day and Christmas, or Labor Day and Thanksgiving that cause issues.
I did wanna mention, Tom and I talked about the December 5th, it's possible we would have a runoff election, and that I believe would be the election date, but we should know the results by our November meeting that we can vote in that meeting.
Right, so that's on that Tuesday, because the Thursday before is Thanksgiving, right? So it's like, you just have to, whatever, that's one that we'll do together, and I separated those out a long way so that, you know, we don't have to sit for eight hours straight, we can take a break, we can have dinner in between or whatever. The next one is 066, which is the one we added, that's the thing with the red tab on it. That is an MOU with Trust for Public Land, if you remember, they're building pavilions and restroom facilities in both the Campbellton Park and the Riverlands Park, also a couple of tent pads and that sort of stuff for the locals camping. And we just needed to have an MOU with them about allowing access and all of that. That went through Rick, and we made a couple changes, and Rick's happy with the form of it now, and they're happy with the changes. of it now, and they're happy with the changes.
So does this include also Campbellton Park?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
And, and they just, the problem with this is, they've got some work that's actually starting in November.
Okay.
And they needed to have this in place before then, so we need to adopt it before.
Work in a what?
I, I don't know where they are in the process. No, I think it's getting in to actually start doing the site planning.
Brad Jones.
But they want access, right? They want legal access, not, not just us bringing them out there.
I didn't know what sort of work they're doing.
Yeah, I don't know. No, they're still, they're still, they still have to come through us for all that. It's just, they can't even get the, they don't even want to bring the architects in without permission, right?
Any, any news on the MOU with Fulton County on senior services?
No, I sent back all the feedback that we gave them, and we had a call scheduled, and the morning of the call, the lady, I can't remember her name, she called me and said she was sick, and that she had to reschedule, and that was two weeks ago. And I've emailed her twice, and we're trying to get that next call scheduled. I think that local option sales tax may be a little bit gumming up every conversation with Fulton County right now, just for what that's worth. I got a sassy call from Rob Pitts the other day, whatever. You, you pointed out that we don't really have a good...
Form letter, residents can use your talking points.
Yeah, and, and so, Rob Pitts actually sent out a letter to all the mayors last week, and I've been working on a response to it, because it lays out all of the really stupid theories that they're using to, to support their arguments that they're making, and it's very easy to pick it apart. And I'm about halfway through that, I was just going to share it with the other mayors, too. I'll finish that up this weekend and give that to everybody, because it's, it's a kind of a point-by-point dissection of what they're trying to do and why it's...
What's the cut-off date again, December 10th or something?
30.
30, okay. So, maybe we could make that a topic at our town hall meeting on the 17th, and make that letter, give the citizens some information that they can move on.
And, and we'll also, I will have it ready for the council meeting, so we can hand it out here at the council meeting, and also, the thing, I'm not 100% certain, I don't know that I want to put it on the website, or I might have an edited version to put on the website. Because, you know, they're still running sewer down here and stuff like that, and I don't, I don't want to poison the well, I just want to...
There's that.
Have them not steal so much money.
Yeah.
Sorry, lost the agenda. Oh, that's it on the agenda.
Yep.
And then, CVB director, we just talked about that, again, I, I think, I think that it is best for us to wait till this group is seated...
Yes.
And let them start having the conversation about what is needed to support that, unless anybody thinks otherwise.
That's a good idea.
Local option sales tax, the, the latest on that, they started out with, I mean, again, the arc of this. In the last negotiations, 10 years ago, the county united with all the cities except for Atlanta, because at the time, Atlanta was asking for more than their share, because everything comes from Atlanta. And we all agreed that everybody would basically get the population share, which is one of the ways you can divide this money, and it is the easiest one, because it's the only one that you have data to track. They don't have data to track where taxes are collected and all, they don't have good data for that. And so, that was the theory that Fulton County supported the last time we did this. They got 5.5%, because they had about 5.5% of the county's population in unincorporated Fulton County at the time. This time, because of the city of South Fulton being created, and the, the growth that's happened in the county since then, all inside of municipal territory, they've only got, I think, about 700 or 800 people still in unincorporated Fulton County, living just outside of Charlie Brown Airport, which is about 8/10 of a percent or something like that. And so, we were expecting them to come in and say, hey, we want to keep our 5%, you know, and everybody was ready to say, okay, you can do that, because we're all used to this budget share, rather than going down to the 2/10 or percent or whatever that they're actually owed under the population thing. And their initial offer was 30%, and everybody's chin's just hit the floor. And so our initial counter offer was the 2/10 of a percent that they actually deserve, since we're all being silly. But the thing is, so there are only certain uses that you can use lost for, and they're basically public service kinds of things. The one thing that they're asking for money for now, I mean, they have narrowed their scope down, because they realize that most of the things that they're saying that they need help for are things that we already pay for, right? We need help with, well, the hospital's a different thing. It's, it's the jail, it's the, it's the animal services, it's the, a lot of those things were 911, where we pay the county on a fee-for-use service, or, or, you know, through a tax thing that we do, whatever. And they get paid for what we use from them. All the cities pay them for those things. Now, they lard on huge layers of overstaffing and over-management. You know, their police department and sheriff's department are just as big now as they were back when they had actual areas to police, for example. They actually have more management in their fire department now than they did when they had fire service areas other than the airport.
But aren't they also counting their population differently in the letter Pitts is putting out?
They're counting the population twice, as if we're serving them and they're serving them separately.
They're counting all of the citizens in Fulton County, rather than just...
Twice, twice.
The unincorporated.
No, I mean, there's no way, there's no way, there's just no way, which is so indicative of why their budget is so bad. And, you know, they're, in the meantime, they're begging Atlanta to lease them parts of the Atlanta jail, because they're so overcrowded. And like, you know, in the meantime, trying to steal the money from Atlanta that Atlanta uses to pay for the jails, it's, it's... And, the problem is, that if they don't sign off, loss goes away, right? And they're holding every city hostage over that. You know, whether it's 5% or 30%, it's not a huge impact on their budget one way or the other. And 5% is not enough, they're saying, to make it worth even keeping. So they're willing to, you know, take 95% of that money, half of which comes from outside of Fulton County, half of which is spent by people that don't live here and throw away. It's created huge ill will with all the cities. And it's, it's a couple of the commissioners that are pushing it, and a couple that are coolest, and, you know, all of that normal stuff. So yeah, you know, if commissioners were to hear from a lot of citizens, we don't want you stealing $500,000 from our city, or whatever the number is.
Well, I had an idea today when I really voted, and we had to vote for our Fulton County Commissioner, and there's only one person on the ballot, and then there was a write-in. And I was going to write in Bozo the Clown, and I thought, no, maybe I shouldn't do that. But there is really no way to, to, you know, like, someone, anyone besides you guys who are not representing us, there's really nothing I don't feel like citizens can do that would be a threat.
Really great, bro. What's our mascot? We should have each city write in their mascots. The Chathills Bear. No, I...
Raccoon.
Arnie Armadillo, right? Okay.
Raccoon.
Anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that, that kind of point-by-point, we'll give it to everybody, and it is useful, because I get the feeling, when we go to the average county commission meeting, there's as many people in that room as there are in this room, right? Representing a million people.
Can you just figure out how many more commission meetings there are before we get deadline?
Two.
Well, two. Right now, there's an election for them, too. Couple them up for election, November 8th. So, we're trying really hard to pressure them now, but, I mean, this, this feels very, I think, very far from people's heads.
There's no option.
Interesting meeting at the...
Broadband Summit?
Whatever, wherever I was for the broadband summit. There is a lot of money floating around out there, and a lot of the internet service providers are committing to that money, but it's like Charter that picked up most of Chedoochee Hills, you know, they commit to doing it, and then you can't get them to answer the phone. They have five years, but I, I was hearing at the summit today that a lot of them are already dropping commitments that they've made. Like, you know, they committed to do this area, now they're dropping it, and it's available for somebody else to pick up, but it's not happening again.
And is that, restart the clock?
Is that happening here yet?
It, it hasn't happened here yet, but I, you know, again...
Is that restart the five-year clock, so they get a new five years?
No, I mean, the, the federal program is supposed to get this done within five years.
Yeah.
But the problem is, there, if you can't find somebody willing to do it, you're still not going to get it done, right? A big problem is still, and we talked about this before, the EMCs are not allowed to do it without creating a whole separate company. They already have fiber going to every transformer, they already have power lines going to every house. And I, I had a side conversation there with a couple of state reps that I know that were there, and also the guy who's in charge of the state's, I'm forgetting the name of the department, but it's the department that covers this, and the GMA rep, again, about, you know, I'm absolutely certain you could get the mayors of 50 little cities to stand up in front of the legislature and say, the fact that Comcast has lobbied you guys to prevent the EMCs from doing this work is why half of Georgia doesn't have internet, and you can fix that tomorrow. Right now, you know, linemen, generally speaking, are fairly quiet in between storms, right? They could be stringing that wire every day, they could get it done so quickly compared to anybody else, because they're already out there, they've got all the equipment, but they're not allowed to. If an, if an EMC is going to do it, they have to start a whole new company, and they can't use any of the same equipment, any of the same money and all of that. It's, it's like the stupidest thing. So that lobbying effort is coming together, that doesn't help short-term, but, anyway, that's something that I continue to work on a lot, so, whatever that's worth.
Wow.
And that's it for me.
Anything else?
Thanks, everybody, see you Tuesday.